Johnson.
Here.
Melton is absent, Rowe is absent, Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Danny Bagley.
Good afternoon, everyone, please be seated. Want to take just a minute to recognize that it is National Teachers' Day in our country, and I want to recognize my late mother who was a teacher. I got two sisters-in-laws that are teachers, my brother who's a principal, used to be a teacher. It's also National Nurses Week. Recognize the great care not only do our teachers do of educating our kids, but the care that the nurses give us each and every day, keeping us healthy and safe. My sister-in-law, my niece, and my girlfriend's daughter's in nursing school, so thanks to all the nurses out there for the great work you do. And last but not least, it is Professional Municipal Clerks Week, so thank you for all the clerks in government. I know at OPPD where I've been 34 years, if you want to get anything done at that company, you better know a good clerk, and I know that goes with the city as well, so I'm going to recognize all those people today. Thanks, Pete.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the meeting act is posted in White Bay on East Wall legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here this afternoon and look forward to your remarks on our many agenda items. If you have trouble hearing, I'll offer two resources for you. We do have a screen in the back of the room that has closed captioning, or you may request hearing aids from the city clerk here at the front desk if you need them.
Item six, to consider Class C liquor license for El Milagro located at 529 North 155th Plaza, A's communication from the Planning Department regarding a permit for the outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today, proponents, please.
For South 87th Avenue, here on behalf of the applicant, El Milagro Mexican Restaurant, LLC, which will be located at 529 North 155th Plaza. This will be a traditional Mexican-style restaurant. I would note to the council that the chief building inspector has asked us to stipulate to the approval of a building permit for the outdoor area, which my client will stipulate to. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? All second? There's a motion, a second? No further lights, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item seven, to consider Class D liquor license for Cleo's located at 1202 Howard Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today, proponents, please. Are there any proponents for Cleo's today?
I think so.
Yes, yes, please come down. Are you the applicant?
I think so.
Okay. Tell us your name and address.
My name's Alexis Christensen, but the address for the restaurant is 1202 Howard Street.
Okay. And you're here in favor of the application?
Mm-hmm.
And are you the applicant or manager?
I'm the general manager of the restaurant.
Okay, great, thanks. I'll ask for any other proponents that are here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed, Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Ms. Christensen, good afternoon, thanks for coming down today. You want to just tell us a brief overview of what Cleo's is going to be down here in the old market?
Yeah, so it's a Mediterranean-inspired wine bar, so we'll have a full-scale restaurant as well as a wine bar aspect to it. It's going to have about 95 seats with patio as well. It's part of Flagship Restaurant Group, so it's going to be the 11th concept and I think the 41st restaurant.
And that outdoor patio is available for sitting outside?
Mm-hmm.
That'll be great in the old market, so I'll be glad to make a motion today to support this, and I wish you the best of luck down in the old market.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion, a second? To approve, no further lights, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a Class D liquor license for Laguna Bar and Restaurant located at 5611 South 36th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today, proponents, please.
Hello, my name is Cindy Hernandez, and this is my mom, Raquel Hernandez. We're looking at opening up a local bar down in South Omaha. It's at 5611 South 36th Street, right in front of Mr. Bud's. So we just kind of wanted to do like a sport bar style bar. In the future, we are looking into opening up to a restaurant, so we might just add in a kitchen or have some food trucks outside of the area. But just kind of like having like soccer games. Like recently, we had like the box fight with Canelo and that, so we just want to do something small. It was just an opportunity, we decided to jump in, and my mom is just kind of like helping me, because I want to become my own boss, so she just kind of opened it up for an opportunity for me, so just something like that.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Motion, a second, to approve, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Item nine, to consider a Class D liquor license for Sandpoint located at 655 North 114th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today, proponents, please.
My name is Jonathan Taylor, I'm one of the owners of Sandpoint. We're just looking to switch from a Class I to a Class C so that we can offer wine dinners, those types of things, and if people like what they're having, they can buy something to take home as well.
Okay.
We're located at 655 North 114th Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Motion, a second, to approve, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 10, to consider a Class D liquor license for The Vault located at 10730 Pacific Street, Suite 20.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today, proponents, please.
Proponent for The Vault, it's located at Regency Landing, basically Pacific and 680. I am one of the owners. Speakeasy, basically, 30-seat, small, open in the evenings only, no food except possibly light food without cooking equipment.
Okay. And your name and address for the record?
Darrell Ald, and address is 10730 Pacific Street, Omaha, Suite 20.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Motion, a second, to approve, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 11, to consider a Class I E liquor license for The Brunch Box located at 225 North 12th Street, Suite 130.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today, proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Goodrich. I'm the owner of The Brunch Box. I was here a year ago, almost to the day, opening our old market. We're expanding to the Capital District, which is 225 North 12th Street, and we're applying for the entertainment liquor license as well.
And your address?
225 North 12th Street, Suite Number 130, Omaha, Nebraska 68102.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed, Ms. Johnson?
Um, are you Ms. Hannah?
I'm Stephanie Goodrich.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Goodrich. Hi, how are you today?
Hi, I'm good, how are you?
Good. Can you tell me a little bit about your operation, your hours of business?
Yeah.
Who you plan to market, and things like that?
Yep, so we've been open for a year in the old market, and it's gone really well. We have a brunch-style food, we're open Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. until about 2:00 p.m., and we're a job site for Omaha Public School students, they get to learn like career stuff during the day. And then in the evenings, Friday and Saturday, we're open until 2:00 a.m. The food that we serve is brunch-style food, it can be made traditionally or vegan, so anyone that's like dairy-free or doesn't eat meat, or it can be made gluten-free, so we're inclusive to all families. And then we have alcohol-infused frozen yogurt, so that's what the alcohol's for.
Sounds good. Will you have any type of security?
So the Capital District does provide security, and my staff goes through a short training on like security, but we've talked to them about having like walkie-talkies that are directly from us to the security, but they said they have about 17 security guards throughout the weekend that's on staff. And I'm a social butterfly, I have lots of connections already, I've met all the other business owners in Capital District, and look to kind of help enhance maybe reputation of it just being like late night, but we can offer more of that daytime programming and more of a wholesome atmosphere too during the day, so.
And how soon will you be open for operation?
We would like to open June 1st.
Alright.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Motion, a second, to approve, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 12, to consider a Class I liquor license for Okeydokey Bar and Grill located at 2007 North 72nd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today, proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Brenda Herrera, and I am one of the owners of Okeydokey Bar and Grill.
Thank you.
It's located in 2007 North 72nd Street. We are just trying to have a little bit of breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We are trying to put together a little bit of American cuisine and Mexican, and we're just trying to serve good margaritas, Bloody Marys, Nimosas for our customers.
Alright, sounds good. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed, Mr. Harding.
Hi, Brenda, just a couple of quick questions. You have no affiliation with the previous ownership, is that correct?
Yeah, we, he's my stepdad.
Oh, you do have an association with the?
Oh, no, no association, but he's my, I thought you were talking about family related. But yeah, no association anymore. It's going to be just me and my aunt now, owners.
Okay.
And he's not the owner anymore.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Curtis, their, the previous ownership was not up to date on their restaurant tax, is that correct?
Steve Curtis, City Finance, they were, after an audit, they were about $8,000 out of complaints.
Okay. And normally, if there was, no, if there was an arm's-length transaction, I would assume that, you know, we can't reach back or maybe hold up on this until that has been satisfied, so I don't know if I'm going to ask you to answer that question or the city attorney, but I do have an issue if this is not an arm's-length transaction, that there may be an appearance that there's, it's an avoidance of paying the past due restaurant tax.
I think, and I'd have to validate this, that we believed it was an arm's-length transaction, and to the extent it appears it may not have been, that might have changed our perspective on this as well.
I'll ask Mr. Cousy if you would weigh in.
Matt Cousy, Law Department, it'd be my reminder to the council that the failure to pay the restaurant tax is not a basis for, that standing alone is not a basis for a denial, however, the council is free to lay this matter over, assuming that there is time available.
So now I'll go to the clerk, is there time available, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
In that case, I will make a motion to lay over.
Second.
There's a mo, uh, date specific?
Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta check my calendar here, so, well, till the 14th.
Okay.
Till May 14th.
There's a motion to labor for one week and a second, and I have, just to make sure you understand the nature of the questioning, it's not questioning you as a potential owner, but the previous owner does owe some back restaurant taxes to the city that's unresolved.
Was it Danny's or? Was it Danny's that owed?
No.
Or Joe?
No, it's the previous owner of the Okeydokey.
Okay.
I believe was your stepfather.
I wasn't aware that he owed tax money, because we are today, and since we jumped in in January, we've been paying everything we have to, you know, and like I said, we weren't aware of that, that.
Okay.
Maybe, well, then we'll have a week to figure it out then, but I think that's something that you're probably going to have to check with the clerk's office and probably the city finance office as well, too.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah, definitely.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion, a second, to labor for one week, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, four to one. Item 13, to consider a Class D liquor license for Expediant Liquor Mart located at 14314 U Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today, we have the proponent by Zoom, we'll get you off mute here in a minute. Alright, try that. Your name and address?
Hi, my name is Ozoda Rahimova. The store address is 14314 U Street.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? There's a motion to approve in a second, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14, to consider a Class D liquor license for Trendy Mart located at 8242 Maple Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 14 is today, proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Pawan Surupnity. I'm the owner of Trendy Mart Incorporated, and we sell, it's located at 8242 Maple Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68134. We sell, it's a convenience store, we sell gasoline, diesel, automotive products, and packaged beverages, cigarettes, and tobacco products, snacks, healthy, health and beauty products. We also offer ATM service and air machine.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? There's a motion, a second, to approve, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 15, to consider a liquor license, change of trade name and location application for Eli's Chinchurro to be located at 906 North 16th Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 is today, proponents, please.
Yes, my name is Ellie Bersh, I'm the owner of the Chinchurro Borico, and we apply for that change location. We before had, are in, close to Solomillo and 32nd Street, and we now go to move on 16th Street and coming.
Okay. And your address, please?
906 North 16th Street, Omaha.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Hi, how are you today?
Good.
Good. Can you tell me a little bit about your business, your hours of operation, who you plan to support, and your security and those kinds of things?
Absolutely. We, it's a, our restaurant, my restaurant, is a Puerto Rican restaurant, Caribbean food. I'm from Puerto Rico, and we are the first Puerto Rican restaurant in the whole state of Nebraska, thank you so much for the opportunity. And we bring food, we got the, our hours are going to be starting at 11 o'clock, bring lunch, we are in the middle of the, close to Crayton, and we go to bring lunch and close like around 8 o'clock. And what else? I'm nervous.
Um, what?
Yeah, we go to have, I'm sorry, we go to have security.
Okay. And will you, what days of operation?
Tuesday through Sunday.
Tuesday through Sunday?
Yes.
And who are you planning to market in terms of coming into your restaurant? Would that be the students at Crayton or?
Yes, my restaurant is always fatigued so the family, and the most of the customer is a family, but my, the restaurant go in any person. We support too much at times the shelter in the back, and we go to bring different offer for the person who just have half an hour for lunch, we go to have a lunch ready, different offer for the students too.
So you're going to have promotional offers?
Yes, absolutely.
And as far as training to serve liquor, what, who will be, who has that training, and how will that be managed in terms of your operation?
I have the training.
Okay.
I'm the manager of the store, go to taking the next week the training, and I have two, I apply for two different patios, patio in the front of the commentary and patio on the side, too.
Okay, and you're aware of that area in terms of some of the barriers as far as leaving bottles and things of that nature in the area, how do you plan to address that?
Clean everything, take care, the server go to take care of that people, everybody in the back, and we go to have a security all day.
And have you reached out to any of the neighbors in that area regarding your intentions?
Yes, I introduced myself to the person who live, stay in close to me.
What, how many people did you reach out to?
Not too much, just apartments, and I have in the left side the Antiquities Place, yes. We're working right now too much in the building, we want to open for the May 24, and we're working in every day like eight or nine hours, including Sundays. The next week, everything okay this week in the restaurant, next week, we got, we have family members and friends go to introduce by myself in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I would encourage you to make yourself knowledgeable regarding your neighbors and other businesses in that area, especially if there is a desire to expand your business or be successful.
Absolutely, yeah, I'm so excited.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Motion, a second, to approve, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Good luck.
Item 16 through 20 can be considered together for Maple 180 located northeast of 180th Street and West Maple Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 16 and 17, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and MU District. Item 18, an ordinance to approve a mixed-use district development agreement. Item 19, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 20, a resolution to approve subdivision agreement.
Public hearings and votes on items 16 through 20 are today, proponents, please.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the development, the developer. With me today is Kyle Hossi of E&amp;A Consulting, the consulting engineers on this particular project. This is just a mixed-use development on the northeast corner of 180th and West Maple Road, so we're really just here to answer any questions, kind of your standard fair mixed-use area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Motion, a second, to approve, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Items 21 through 24 can be considered together for Rainwood Park located east of 180th and McKinley Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 21, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to GI District. Item 22, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the future land use element of the master plan. Item 23, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 24, a resolution to approve subdivision agreement.
Public hearings and votes on items 21 through 24 are today, proponents, please.
John Blumenthal, 1700 Farnham Street, Omaha, on behalf of developer Backcountry Holdings One LLC, here today to propose an industrial park in northwest Omaha, and developers here today happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? There's a motion, a second, to approve, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Items 25 through 28 can be considered together for Hagan Hills located northeast of 160th Street and Military Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 25 and 26, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R4 District. Item 27, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 28, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearings and votes on items 25 through 28 are today, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Martin Pelster, Crocker Huck Law Firm, 2120 South 72nd Street, Suite Number 1200, Omaha, Nebraska, on behalf of the applicant, Hagan Hills LLC, this is a 46-lot subdivision in, at roughly 168th and Rainwood. It's residential subdivision, I have Kyle Hossi with E&amp;A Consulting Group here answering any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? There's a motion, a second, to approve, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Items 29 through 34 can be considered together for Millwork Commons Replat Two located north of 13th and Nicholas Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 29 and 30, ordinances to rezone this property from CBD District and HI District to CBD District and HI District. Item 31, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the NCE overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 32, an ordinance to rescind the ACI I overlay district. Item 33, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 34, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearings and votes on items 29 through 34 are today, proponents, please. Public hearings and votes on items twenty-nine through thirty-four are today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Katie Underwood with Olson, representing the applicant, twenty-one eleven South Sixty Seventh Street. This project uh is to rezone and replat an area specifically for a new multi-story multifamily building uh with retail on the main floor. But we're also cleaning up the rest of um the area, it was a bit of a puzzle piece network of plats. Um and we're cleaning it up uh with this replat as well. So I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed, Ms. Johnson. There's a motion to approve in a second, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass five to zero. Item thirty-five, an ordinance to rezone property located at eight eight three eight Lake Street from R two District to G C District and G C District to R five District, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty-five is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Are you here for this item, sir? Number thirty-five? Okay, public hearings closed. All second, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass five to zero. Item thirty-six, an ordinance to rezone property located northeast of Forty Eighth Avenue and Y Street from R four thirty-five District to R five thirty-five District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty-six is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon. I represent uh Espa Benitez for the change of zoning from uh R four to R five.
Okay. And your name and address?
I'm George Rum, twenty-three fourteen South Ninetieth Street, Omaha.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. There's a motion to approve in a second, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass five to zero.
Thanks.
We're good?
Yep.
Thanks.
Item thirty-seven, an ordinance to rezone property located at two 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 four Poppleton Avenue from GI District to R five District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty-seven is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Motion to approve in a second, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass five to zero. Item thirty-eight, an ordinance to rezone property located at five zero two North Forty Street from R four District to R five District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty-eight is today, proponents please.
Jared Gerber, fifty thirty-seven Parker Street. And we're looking at changing from the R four to an R five uh so we can have a ADU above a unfinished garage right now that we plan on finishing out. The whole neighborhood is surrounded by R seven, which is multifamily. There actually are no other R fours, R fives in the immediate neighborhood there, so I'm happy to take questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed, Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I was talking with the planning director earlier today about this and mentioning that I think this is one of the first ADUs that's been, that's come through since we passed that ordinance for that. So I, I wanted to ask the planning director just to weigh in a little bit on that as well too.
Well, actually, I start, I started the process before that was approved for ADUs, so actually an R five can have an ADU already. So I started the process um and then the council approved ADUs for, for R fours, so.
After you'd started the process?
After I started the process, because it's already, already gone through the planning board, so.
Okay. You got caught in the middle, I guess.
I did, I did.
Thank you, thank you for, for what you're doing with that, that development then as well too, thanks.
Well, still, we'll still give you credit for being the first one, how's that? Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President, good afternoon, quick question for you. So I drove by on Forty and Casser and that garage, I remember as a kid riding my bike a hundred years ago down that hill. Is there anything in that garage now, because it already looks like that there's already, could be an apartment there that's got windows and?
No, it's totally unfinished, I mean, they parked their car in the, on the main level. But the upstairs, he just has like wood and things stored in there, so it's totally unfinished right now, so it has to be all finished out.
Okay, no, I, I also had good conversation with Eric England from planning on this when I saw ADU on there. My understanding is this doesn't approve an ADU, is that correct, Mr. Fanslaw?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning, this is a rezoning that then will allow an ADU to be constructed.
Right, okay, I think that's what Eric translated to me when we had a conversation on it, so thanks for clarifying that. And I wish, that's pretty cool there, a lot of the House and Jocelyn, there's a few of those out there like that, that, that have the ADUs in the back from a hundred years ago that, so you're looking maybe to rebrand that one there, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I wish you the best of luck, thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion approve.
Motion a second to approve, Ms. Johnson.
Um, um, my colleague stole my thunder, so I will yield to him.
Okay. Uh no further lights, there's a motion and a second to approve, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass five to zero. Item thirty-nine, an ordinance to rezone property located at two three zero four Grace Street from GI District to C C District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty-nine is today, proponents please.
My name is Michelle Austin Mitchell and I, um, the address is twenty-three oh four Grace Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one one zero. And I am rezoning, it always has been a daycare there, but I didn't know it was the wrong zoning. Because it's, I had to do some renovations for a while.
Okay, coming into compliance then, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Sorry, motion? Motion a second to approve, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass five to zero. Item forty, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the GI District located at one three four three five A Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number forty is today, proponents please.
Hi, Tommy Licarbo, I'm the applicant, address is five three five North Tenth Avenue, Springfield, Nebraska, six eight zero five nine. Basically, I'm asking for a special use permit uh to operate the billiards club that we previously discussed uh which uh fell into a GI District and just one of the requirements.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed, Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Uh, Mr. Professor, if you would. I know it's been a long haul for you on this and I appreciate your, your persistence and wish you the best of luck as, as you get your operation up and going.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Motion a second to approve, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass five to zero.
Thank you all.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items forty-one and forty-two were held on April thirtieth, there are no further lights, is there a motion? Motion a second to approve, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass five to zero.
There's been a request to take number sixty-one off the consent agenda, so first we'll have the public hearings on agenda items forty-three through sixty. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name and address and who you represent, if you are a proponent or an opponent. These are items forty-three through sixty. Seeing none? I think we may have a, a speaker here coming down, okay?
Russell, Russell S. Dobbs, twenty-eight hundred South one hundred and tenth Court for item number sixty as a proponent, only to answer any questions if it, they would be needed.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Okay. Would you like to repeat the motion? Oh, yep. All right. This is forty-three through sixty, is there a motion?
I had my name in, in the queue here.
All right.
Well, you can do whatever you like, but at the end of the day, I will not be voting on number sixty.
So your light is night on, not on, but we can accommodate that if you are abstaining on number sixty, is that that?
Uh, I'm gonna do a no vote on number sixty.
Okay. So we'll take number sixty separately. There's a motion approved forty-three through fifty-nine in a second, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass five to zero.
Is there a motion on number sixty? There's a motion in a second, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass four to one. Item sixty-one, a resolution to approve the purchase agreement with City of Omaha and the Keywit Corporation for the sale and transfer of properties located at five zero seven North Sixteenth Street, five one four North Sixteenth Street and one five zero two Cass Street.
Public hearing and vote on number sixty-one is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, if you would, please come up.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department.
Thank you. Um, we kinda had a conversation during our pre-council that a lot of moving parts have taken place here since twenty eighteen. And understanding that this is for the sale and transfer of property, more specifically these three properties. I would like for you to provide us a snapshot of how we got to where we're at today for purposes of clarity, for purposes of knowledge to constituents in which I serve.
Of course. In December of twenty eighteen, the city council approved a redevelopment agreement between the city and Nodle Companies for what's known as the Builders District. The Builders District is roughly between fifteenth and seventeenth street, Cass and Coming. The intent there was to take a fairly underutilized area of the city that's immediately between Creighton University and downtown and attempt to redevelopment, redevelop the area into something that's a little bit more dense and a little bit more appropriate to the surrounding uses. Uh, as part of that agreement, the city agreed to assist uh in acquiring property within the neighborhood if necessary. In January of twenty twenty, the city approved an ordinance necessity for various properties between fifteenth and sixteenth street between Cass and Mike Fahey. Pursuant to that ordinance necessity, the city negotiated for and attempted to acquire a property located at fifteen oh two California. Uh, we were unable to acquire that property, so we initiated condemnation proceedings in May of twenty twenty-two. In February of twenty twenty-three, we were able to come to a settlement agreement with the property owner to acquire fifteen oh two California, which was at the time a four-story warehouse building located on the corner, as well as five other properties owned by that property owner. Uh, we acquired, uh, we entered into that settlement agreement to acquire all six properties, that agreement was approved by city council in February of twenty twenty-three. Pursuant to that settlement agreement, we have uh over the course of the last year or so acquired those properties from the property owner through a direct sale um in essentially chunks. So we acquired fifteen oh two California, the warehouse property, in, uh, it was May of twenty twenty-three. We acquired, uh, oh, and fifteen oh two Cass at the same time. We acquired fifteen fifteen California and fifteen thirteen North Sixteenth in December of last year. And we acquired five oh seven North Sixteenth and five fourteen North Sixteenth in just April of this year, uh, last month. Uh, as part of the redevelopment agreement, we have an understanding with Keywit and an agreement with Keywit that Keywit is to reimburse us, the city, for all costs expended to acquire those properties. Uh, so Keywit is reimbursing us for all money spent by the city to acquire the properties. In exchange, we are conveying the property to Keywit for their use in their redevelopment projects. We conveyed fifteen oh two California, fifteen fifteen California and five thirteen North Sixteenth Street to Keywit uh December, January, uh, just a few months ago. And then the remaining three properties will be conveyed to Keywit through this purchase agreement of approved today.
Thank you, and the previous owners, um, where are they, where have they been relocated?
Uh, the previous owner was responsible for relocating their own businesses through the proceeds that were uh gained through the sale of the property.
Okay.
Uh, the properties were owned generally by Bruce Kymen uh and operated Saul's Jewelry and Loan. Saul's Jewelry and Loan has since uh identified, obtained, uh, obtained and redeveloped, remodeled a relocation site, which is actually about two blocks from here upon Twenty Second, Twenty Third and Harney. I think they just opened a couple of weeks ago, which is why we can complete this transfer now.
And may I ask what happened with Pettits?
Uh, Pettits is still there and was not subject, none of these properties are Pettits property.
Okay. So, um.
Pettits remains.
Oh, thank you. One last question, um, did we utilize eminent domain for any of this?
Uh, we did initiate condemnation proceedings on fifteen oh two California, but we never did complete those proceedings.
Okay.
We instead negotiated a settlement agreement with the property owner that allowed us to uh resolve that pending litigation as well as acquire the other six property, or the five properties owned in the district that were subject to the ordinance necessity.
Thank you.
Thank you, there's no further lights, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
All second. Roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass five to zero. Items sixty-two and sixty-three can be considered together, resolutions to approve financial aid in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to Elkhorn Public Schools Foundation and Relevant Community Church to be used to assist those who are affected by the severe weather on April twenty-sixth.
Public hearing and votes on items sixty-two and sixty-three are today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, my name is Stacy Falk, Executive Director of the Elkhorn Public School Foundation. Address is two two one four South one eighty-third circle. I'm here just to thank you for allowing me to speak and for your consideration of the funding grant that was proposed for fifty thousand for our families in our school district that have been affected by the tornado.
Thank you.
And I'm open to any and all questions.
All right. Any other proponents today?
Margaret Purdue, Assistant Grant Manager, Mayor's Office, I'm available for any questions as well.
Thank you. Other proponents?
My name is Rodney Roth, the, I'm the Lead Pastor, Relevant Community Church, uh, who was uh asked by the mayor's office if we'd be willing to uh take these funds to help families in need. And uh so we said, if, if you wanted to go straight to families, we will get it straight to families, so um willing to answer any questions you guys got.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Hello, my name is Luke Schrour, I live at uh nine two five Pierce Street, apartment three oh nine. Uh, and I'm opposed to this uh simply because if I'm, if I understand this grant right, it goes to whatever neighborhoods that um you guys and the mayor deem um appropriate, is that correct in my understanding of this?
What's proposed are the two appropriations to these two particular entities.
Right, from the neighborhood grant account, is that, and then that can be allocated to any neighborhood seeing as what you deem as fit, correct? Am I understanding that correctly, because that might change um how I'm.
I think we'll ask some questions here in a minute.
Okay, no problem. Um, if that is the case, I'm opposed to this because um we have these older growth neighborhoods, our Benson's, our North Omaha, all these smaller neighborhoods that are based around that small town Main Street that I've talked about before. And the suburban sprawl is a detriment to city budgets. So we subsidize them by the tax revenue that we make in our economic powerhouses like the Downtowns and the Benson's. And this, these older style developments, um, pre-World War Two developments are a net gain far, they, they're a far higher net gain to a city budget than the suburban sprawl that we continue to do. The wider and more far apart things are, the more of a drain on a city budget. So I personally think that we are subsidizing um West Omaha communities currently through our taxes that we, that we make in other parts of the city. Plus, there is a lot of um socialism going on right now with um charity and, and donating of time and resources from all these different organizations. I do think that we are, we are neglecting some of our older um neighborhoods um that really could use street upgrades. And they, they all have their own little niches. But I do think that we are already funneling a lot of tax money out west. And if we have these neighborhood grant funds, yes, the tornado is a tragedy and it's a once-in-a-lifetime tragedy. But I see every week, almost every day on the news, this person in a car accident, a police officer was just hit and killed. We have pedestrians being killed. There was no human fatalities, if I'm correct, in the tornado. And when I see the drone footage, I see massive death and destruction of our habitat out there. So what we're doing on the periphery of our city is not sustainable. And I would, I would appreciate if we didn't divert important neighborhood funding to a place that I feel like we are subsidizing right now anyway. And I apologize if I got something wrong, maybe somebody can clarify that if that's not how it works. But if that is the case, my heart does go out to the victims, but we have victims dying on our streets in other neighborhoods today. And uh I think we have this major outpouring of help to these communities. So I think we need to focus on some of these other places that we're ignoring frequently, so. That's, that's all I have today, and if you have any questions, bring me back up, otherwise, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is a gentleman in the room named Malik Thornton, if you can come up and um I have a few questions for you, please.
How you doing?
Can you introduce yourself, your name, and your address for the record, please?
Yeah, so my name is Malik Thornton. I'm not a Oklahoman. I don't know if that's the correct word. I'm from Pennsylvania, licensed public insurance adjuster. My company is Major Relief Adjustment.
All right. So, today, Resolution 62, 63 centers around providing assistance to those that were impacted by the weather on April 26. During pre-council, Mr. Thornton also has an opportunity that I believe that we should assist those individual, at least with the knowledge of having the information that he has to offer. So, if you could explain to us what you have to offer so that those who are listening and those that are here could perhaps, if they feel it necessary or deem it necessary, that they can share that additional assistance for these individuals as well.
Yeah, sure. So, for the last 72 hours, me and my colleague, Chris, we've been trying to see if we can get into these communities, Ramblehood, Ramblewood, I'm sorry, and other communities that suffered from tornado damage. I don't know if anybody understands insurance, but there's three different types of insurance adjusters. You have one that works for the insurance company. You have another one that's called independent. And then you have a third party that's a public adjuster. So, public adjusters work solely for the homeowner or business owner. So, the process in way in which I, I believe that the whole process should go is that if these insurers have insurance, they should at least see that there are other avenues for, for them to exhaust. So, the way how a insurance policy is, is that the insurance company covers whatever peril that is lost, like in this situation, a tornado. If the insurance company and the insurer disagree on the amount of loss, there's another section in the policy of that insured which could go to appraisal. Yeah, sure. So, so we're just here-
I will say, though, we need to stay on topic to tornado relief.
Sure.
If you want to summarize your comments, if you're talking about your business, that's a little bit off-topic, I'm going to say.
What part is off-topic?
We're talking about appropriation to two entities that are here to testify. And if you want to summarize your comments, if it's pertaining to your business, I think that is a bit off-topic.
Right. But your purpose that I asked you to be here was to provide knowledge regarding assistance that your company provides. So, if you could summarize that up so that folks in Omaha-
Yeah.
-do have the educational knowledge that they need to be impactful and assist them. Again, this, these two motions are centered around assisting those in these impacted areas.
Correct.
This gentleman has an opportunity for those people to receive additional support or assistance.
So, I'll have you summarize that. I also forgot to get your address. If you could provide that for the record.
Yeah, 2669 Shillington Road, Unit 424, Singin' Spring, Pennsylvania.
Okay.
Yeah. I am licensed by the, by the Department of Nebraska, Department of Insurance, business entity and individual entity, licensed and bonded, just here to just give additional other resources and options for the Oklahoma residents that suffered from the tornado damage. So, these two, what was it, 61, 62, asking for relief, there are other ways that, that they can get relief as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Ms. Perdue, a couple of questions for you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, the, the funds, the 50,000 for Elkhorn Public Schools Foundation and the 50,000 for the Relevant Community Church, can you explain the process of how that money will be allotted and spent?
Yes. So, in the agreements with both Elkhorn Public Schools Foundation and Relevant Center, we have outlined that these are to be funneled through their existing processes of evaluating needs of those directly impacted in the community and being able to channel that to support those needs of those directly impacted by the storms of the 26th. So, that can look in a different variety depending on the level of impact for the residents. And so, we have that scope of work that they can set up using their existing mechanisms to support those in need.
And in the meeting we had this morning, it was made clear, if you can make it clear for the record, that, again, great organizations, thank you. I know, driving out there that Saturday and seeing all the people that were out there to help the community, I mean, I'm assuming Relevant Church and St. Pat's and all these great organizations on Thursday at noon weren't thinking, gosh, there's going to be a major catastrophe going through our neighborhood. So, it was a pretty impressive rally of the community that I, I want to thank everybody that did that, again. So, this morning, when we had a good discussion in our committee, it was talking about these funds that, my understanding is 100% of these will go directly to the community and zero, not one penny will go through administration.
That is correct.
Or it won't be given to the church to spend. Is that correct?
That is correct. It is outlined in the-
I'm sorry, or the Elkhorn Foundation as well.
Right. For both the Foundation and for the Relevant Church, the outline is that these go to direct assistance for those affected. There is no administrative fees included in that. There is no overhead. And it is outlined in our agreement that they must follow that. And there's been conversations with both organizations about that type of direct relief. These were two organizations that were already responding to the events of the 26th and already had that resource and setup to leverage these funds, getting channeled, have identified families and residents that have been affected and have already been working to support and connect them with needs, to have their needs met. And as those are community-based organizations that were already doing that work, we saw them as two organizations that could really leverage what they already have in place to get this to those in need as efficiently as possible.
Okay. And some of the things we discussed, we're talking about meals?
Yeah. So, it can obviously vary depending on the way that the residents were impacted. So, it could, you know, include meals that were needed, you know, if transportation was impacted for residents, for getting children to school, if ride shares are needed. We have some flexibility to tailor to the needs of the individuals with that.
And how did you, just let us know how you arrived at picking these two organizations to distribute these $100,000 of funds?
Again, they were two organizations that were really already leveraging response. The Relevant Church was already centered with the, working with the tornado response. And Elkhorn Public Schools had already been working to identify families that had been impacted. And so, really looking at just the community base that they have in that area impacted, as well as the work that they were already doing in accordance with the tornado response prior to these funds being allocated, was one of the ways that we had reached out to see if this was something that they could facilitate. And again, without any administrative or overhead fee, something that they could facilitate getting directly to those affected.
And since it's tax dollars, that 50,000 going to each of these organizations, the city has a right under the contract, if I'm reading it correctly, to access the records and financial auditing can be done at any time by the city.
Yes, there is a clause that they will retain their records for three years.
Three years, okay.
So, and we do have a progress report that we've discussed with organizations that they will complete at the close of the year to let us know how the funds were spent and to record those expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Rodney, is it?
Rodney.
Rodney, I'm sorry. Can I ask you a couple of quick questions?
Absolutely.
Good afternoon. Thanks for coming down today and for all the work that you guys did helping people to get back on their feet. Just for the record, tell us where, so Ramblewood was the area that was hit by the tornado that was devastated, as well as other areas. You guys are located directly across Maple Street from Ramblewood, correct?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. And in respect to dispersing the funds that Ms. Perdue had talked about, it's, for the things we talked about, it was for food, transportation, getting people back on their feet with housing. Is that what you're looking to do when somebody comes? If somebody comes to you, how, how does that work? Just so, I understand if I'm in the community that's in need, how does that work when you meet the person or the family that needs assistance?
Yeah. So, so the last week has been crazy, to say the, to say the least, for us. I mean, we're not a disaster relief organization. We're, we're a church. And so, you know, our response really had to do with the tornado that just decimated the neighborhood directly west of us, directly north of us. Ramblewood is just directly north of us. And so, we, with our partnership with Omaha Rapid Response, Saturday morning at 7:00, we are, we were in place to just start deploying volunteers. And so, this last week, from Saturday through Friday, we deployed about 13,000 volunteers from our parking lot throughout the week. We ended up becoming a donation site. I don't know how that happened. If someone brought in some toilet paper, we sent it in our office, like, oh, and then people just started bringing stuff. So, all week long, 14 hours a day, we had people dropping off donations, coming to pick up those donation supplies, and then rest, local restaurants and organizations, businesses, businesses started bringing food. So, for the entire week, we used every resource we had, our entire building, all my staff, to just go all in on this and provided meals all day, donation, people, just hundreds of people in our building. Well, as we started doing that, we, there's a lot of people who are in our church, who are part of our church that live in those neighborhoods. So, we were like, hey, who are those people? And then, as people started coming in, we just started getting names and addresses of people, like, how were you affected? Was your home destroyed or, or was it, or do you just have a leaky roof? So, we just started collecting names and then people who know people. And so, so far, we've collected about 30 families who have been severely impacted by this. 15 who have completely lost their homes, 10 who are, are with, out of their home right now, up to probably six months, as they're getting their homes really livable. And then, and then another five who just have had some damage because of it. So, as of right now, we have about 30 people that we've, that we just know. And we've had conversations with already. We know where they're at. We know what devastation that they've caused. And so, really, as it's people knowing people, we have a form, hey, we have a form already set up that if you know anybody, direct them to it, they can fill it out, we get it, we contact them, what's your need, what's your situation? And so, we're already having those conversations, we'll continue to. So, when the Mayor's Office contacted us, I think we've received $70,000 from just people within our church who are saying, we need, we want to, we're going to give this, we set up a fund right away of, like, giving this away. So, we've already received $70,000, which is going to go all back out from the people in our church and just some friends and family who want to help. And so, when the, when the Mayor's Office contacted us, my first question was, if you want this to go directly to families, then we know families, we can do that. If there's something else you're wanting to do with it, we're not your organization for that. We're, we're here to help families. I don't, I don't know anything that the city wants to do or anything like that, but, but if you want to help families, we obviously know a lot of families that are affected. We're in the center of this. We will get this to families because we're already doing that.
Thanks for that. And it's not just, obviously not just members of Relevant Church.
No, yeah.
If it was impacted by the tornado.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate that. Sorry, is it Stacy?
Yes, yep.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
Good afternoon. And just kind of touching on the same with the Elkhorn Foundation, how it work with you guys, the same thing that I described there, how will you get those funds out and how will you spend them?
Absolutely. So, on the evening of April 26, when the tornado hit, the majority of our students were locked down in the buildings. So, three schools were impacted greatly from the neighborhoods that feed those schools, Arbor View, Elkhorn Middle School, and Elkhorn High School. Those are the three primary. We have some families in West Ridge as well. So, initially, the students were locked down in Arbor View. So, starting right away, the foundation, we work hand-in-hand with the Elkhorn Public School District, right? That's why we exist, to support them. So, the building principal, Mr. Sitters, was aware right away because he had the children in the building. When the parents were showing up after they were released, many, many parents of his did not have homes. So, we started taking, visiting with, with parents at that time, the building principals. As of today, we have a spreadsheet of 75 families that have students in the Elkhorn Public School District that no longer have a home that's habitable. So, the need, along with Mr. Roth, has been, the last week has been crazy because they're trying to first find places to live. We're paying residents in bills for long-term stay. The primary need that we're seeing right now is food, above and beyond families that lost power. But these are 75 families that either have one or multiple students in the school district, K through high school. So, we have names, we have addresses, and we have also provided gift cards to these families for food. And this, I mean, these funds would obviously help and go a long way in many different things. I mean, they have nothing. So, your consideration is greatly appreciated. But questions? So, that, that's a good number. That does not include our staff. It's National Teachers Day. That doesn't include our staff. We have staff members that lost their homes as well. These are actually families that have children enrolled in the public school district.
Thank you. Appreciate your explanation.
You bet. No problem.
And as Ms. Perdue mentioned, and thank you again for everything that you've done for the community, and there's countless others we can thank that have helped people that have been impacted by this. But I just, I appreciated the briefing we had this morning where, that none of this is going to the church to put in their coffers. It's 100%, and none of it's administrative, that it's going to be dispersed to the people that are in the community that were impacted by the tornadoes. And there's record-keeping auditing that the city can do up to three years. That's what I was told, correct? I know there's a lot of lights on, so thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on one question you were just asking there, too. I appreciate Mr. Begley fleshing that out from our briefings this morning that we had, both in Public Safety Committee and then also at pre-council. But I also want to start by thanking you both and your entities for the amazing response. And as Relevant Church was describing there, you know, this was nowhere on their radar screen until it became a necessity, and you both responded. And it was truly amazing to see all the people that were there and the work that's ongoing for a long period of time in this respect. And we also have had employees impacted by this. We were talking with the police and fire chief this morning about three or five individuals and families in both the police and fire departments. And we asked also, are they being taken care of? And, and both the police chief and fire chief were confident they are and do have a number of other outside resources, too, that are assisting their situations. Maybe just a question for Mr. Curtis, and then maybe Margaret. Is it possible, Mr. Curtis, these appropriations, if they're approved today, would be reimbursable by FEMA, like other expenses, public entities are having?
Steve Curtis, City Finance, it's a good question. I, I'm not exactly sure. Margaret may know better. We have a person in our office who handles the FEMA reimbursement. We could probably follow up with her and get you some more detail after this.
Okay. Definitely something to consider and follow through as we think about applying for those funds, I'm sure. And then, Margaret, the question for you I had is about the neighborhood grants themselves. So, that this, I'm fully supportive of this. This was an extraordinary event. We need to help those in need and do that right away. But I, I do have some concern with the funding source coming from the neighborhood grant program, which has, I think, been a very successful program for neighborhoods throughout the city for many years. And that's where it's proposed to come from. I guess my question is, well, let me first ask, my understanding is neighborhoods had applied for this funding, but have been told at this point that that is no longer moving forward this year. Is that accurate to say?
Yeah, that's correct. We sent out communication to the applicants to let them know that we are planning to redirect this funding to this cause. And so far, the responses that we have received from the neighborhood organizations have all been very supportive and positive that we are reallocating in this direction. We had also, you know, communicated that we will reopen the neighborhood grant application cycle in 2025 and encourage all of those applicants to reapply at that time.
Okay. And about how many applicants did we have? Do you know?
I believe it was 39 applicants.
Okay.
will reopen the neighborhood grant application cycle in 2025 and encourage all of those applicants to reapply at that time.
Okay. And about how many applicants do we have, do you know?
I believe it was 39 applicants.
Okay. So my only observation is, why can't we do both? I think we should absolutely be doing this assistance as quickly as possible. But I think we have the capability to do both this year. And if this is approved today, I'd be interested in re-engaging you on that to see if there could be a possibility to reinvigorate that Neighborhood Grant Program also. I think we do have that financial capability right now with city finances doing how they're doing in 2024. So that'd be my only, my only desire that we pursue both.
And I think that would be a budgetary question at this point, you know, the reallocation of the Neighborhood Grant Funds. We felt that this still fit the scope of the use of those funds. And this was one of the fastest mechanisms to, you know, direct that towards those impacted by the storms. But of course, you know, if there is additional money found that can be reallocated to the Neighborhood Grants, that would be something that, you know, we could take a look at.
Yeah. And, you know, in our finance committee meetings, I think that's pretty evident at this point in the year. It's still first quarter. But as we discussed a little bit last week, I think, sales taxes up, restaurant taxes up, tobacco taxes up. I think we do have the capability to find $100,000 for a Neighborhood Grant Program, should we collectively make that decision.
Yeah. I'm going to look in Mr. Curtis's direction for that one, I guess.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Relevant Church and also the Elkhorn Schools Foundation. As, as I think Ronnie stated and Margaret had said as well, too, that they didn't contact the city. The city contacted them, and for a good reason, is when, as was pointed out, on Saturday morning afterwards, there were more than 1,000 people, I think, in your parking lot at 7:30 in the morning, ready to go out and help, help fellow neighbors and Omhans and Elkhornians for, to help in that relief effort. But I think it's important, too, that as was just pointed out, that this was an immediate need and when we, and the funding and it's consistent with improving neighborhoods, and that was the reason why those funds were identified. And these two organizations, the city identified as, as having those points of contact, immediate points of contact where they had information about those that are most affected. So I think it makes sense that we're using those two organizations in that regard. I might also note that as Mr. Fesserson was just talking about, finding some other funds for taking it from the neighborhood or putting these to use for this cause rather than the neighborhood. I want to point out that we had a similar situation when we had COVID a couple of years ago. We, we as a city, made that decision to reallocate those funds for COVID relief instead of, instead of having the Neighborhood Grant Program that, that year. I might also caution, look, I understand the want, I understand the desire to still get some of those funds to the neighborhood organizations. But as was pointed out, we might be ahead in some of the revenue collections at this point, but we're not even halfway through 2024. So I would caution us to be spending money that we don't necessarily have collected yet. I want to reemphasize, too, as, as Councilmember Bagley pointed out, this is 100% of the funds for this will be deployed. None of it is for administrative costs or for any, and anything goes to Relevant Church or Elkhorn Schools Foundation. And it goes to helping those who need food, clothing, housing. I mean, those are kind of basic needs. They're not even, you know, wants, they're needs that we need to address. So I, again, want to thank those two organizations for stepping up and helping get those funds to those most in need. We were, a couple of us were just at the Salvation Army's DJ, DJ Heroes Awards Luncheon today. And we heard a lot about, you know, giving the most that we can to the most in need. And I think this is one of those cases where we are trying to do the best for our neighbors.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley?
Thanks. Real brief, Mr. President. I'm glad you brought up that point to follow up on with the Neighborhood Grants where we got the money from here, that we do recognize the importance of that money. And if there's FEMA, I know Mr. Curtis mentioned that they can look potentially into getting reimbursed by FEMA. I know OPPD, where they had the great work that the line crews did restoring power to people impacted, they certainly looked to get FEMA reimbursement at OPPD. And I think if the city can get that and we can get that money back for the parks grants, the importance of that for everybody in the city and our communities, that's important. So I appreciate you bringing that up today. Thanks.
Thank you. There's no further lights. Madam Clerk, do we have a vote separately on these items?
That's at the pleasure of the council.
Okay.
62, second.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second to approve both items. Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hugg.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Item 64, in ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on all lots and pieces of real estate within Road Maintenance District 2022-01.
Public hearing on number 64 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 65, in ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on all lots and pieces of real estate within Street Improvement District 2021-01.
Public hearing on number 65 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? There it goes. I think you're just maybe upside down.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the streets that are addressed in this item. And I know that's not much to go off of there, so I have a few photos as well. This is off of Ridgewood Ave. This one's next door. And this shack is on Poppleton. So every week, you guys sit here and approve housing developments. And when a developer goes to sell the finished property, the price point is set that includes the infrastructure, the streets, sewer. And if the developer does not build to the city's standard, the city has no obligation to maintain the road. Now, I understand about a year back or something like that, the council agreed to take over maintenance of this neighborhood. But nobody forced these people to purchase these homes, to live on these properties. They made a decision. They looked out the front door of these homes and saw that the streets were not to the city's standard. And people should be accountable for their decisions without asking to be bailed out by the taxpayer. So I'm asking you to vote no. And then find a way to amend the tax assessment to 100%. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other opponents to number 65? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm going to make a motion, I guess, just a public hearing today.
Yep.
I know we went through a lot on this with District 66 and the neighbors that are being assessed that agreed to repair that road there. So that's my comment for today. I'm in support of this when it comes. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Harding?
A couple, a couple items, and to follow up on Mr. Bagley, too. The, this is really, I don't think, I thought I saw Heather Tippi Pierce earlier. Is she still here? Heather? Oh, there you are. Sorry, if you wouldn't mind.
Heather Tippi Pierce, Public Works.
Thanks, Heather. This is really just kind of the final step in this process, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so.
This is a petition-based process. So in order to levy the taxpayers' portion of the work, we have to go through this authorization process. So this is the public hearing for the authorization to actually levy the tax on the property owners, their participating portion.
So wind the clock back a couple of years.
Sure.
When we're, I think, Councilmember Jerram was still on the council when, when this one started, if I remember right, or the neighboring one.
Sounds about right, yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, my, my point is, there was an agreed-to process by the neighbors. They were going under the roads policy that was mentioned by the previous speaker. It wasn't a year ago. I think it was adopted in 2017. If not 2017, it was 2018 at the latest. But so they, the neighbors entered into a contract, really, with the city to have this work done based upon the roads policy that is currently in place, that was approved by this council. So to go back on them at this point and assess them at 100%, I don't think is something that almost contractually the city could do.
Heather, to be fair, it's Public Works. I, I would defer to the law department as to procedure. If we would want to alter the levy, I do know that it would have to go back, we basically have to step, three steps back in the process. It would have to go through a new Board of Equalization hearing. And at that time, the council would have to show some sort of, there would be a burden of proof on the city, the council, to show as to why the public benefit is not equalized according to the policy that was entered into. So seeing that, you know, we, the, the property owners and Westside School District entered into a cost-sharing arrangement amongst themselves, as well as with the city. This was petitioned by the property owners and the Westside School District. It has followed the policy that was adopted by the council in 2018 and been through a Board of Equalization hearing. The department feels pretty confident that the recommendation that's before you today for public hearing is assessed, is being assessed according to the statutes and according to public benefit.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Bagley?
Thanks, Councilman Harding, for bringing that point up. For, it was my colleague that preceded me that dealt with this issue back a number of years ago. And Heather, I didn't see you sitting over there. It was always your, I got a quick question for you. This was a policy before, in order to do this, the assessment on the, on the property owners that agreed to this, prior to that item that Councilman Harding spoke of years ago, the city was paying zero. Is that correct?
Heather Tippi Pierce, Public Works, that's correct.
Okay. And now it's spelled out, sorry?
Yeah. The, the city would assess 100% to the property owners, correct?
Right. And now the agreement is that the city pays 50% and the property owners are paying, I think Westside's paying part of this, too, but the property owners are paying, they're agreeing to be assessed over a number of years to pay their share of this, correct?
That is correct.
And that was per the policy that was started under Councilman Jerram a number of years ago before, when it was zero, and now it's what it is today at 50%?
That's correct.
Thank you. And sorry, I didn't, you got to sit out here next time.
I can be off camera, though, over there.
Oh, I got you. Thanks for coming down today.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 66, in ordinance to accept the invoice from First Two, Inc., for the purchase of an agency license for an investigative intelligence program for the Omaha Police Department.
Public hearing on number 66 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Non-action items, items 67 through 85, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hugg.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero, meaning it's adjourned at 3:24.